We've got four participants dropping in here, so we'll. Now, we've got more than four participants logging in here. More jumping in, so we'll just, we'll just give it just a second here, because obviously, we are gonna break the record for attendance, it appears. Tonight.
Zoom attendance, you mean? I don't know, what's our typical Zoom attendance?
Twelve, ten?
Twenty-four? Right there.
Twenty-four participants. Okay. Everybody should be muted, so we're set. All right, so we've got a special council meeting here, so we're gonna start by calling the meeting to order real quick with a roll call. I will conduct the roll call. And we'll get this called ordered. Sue Erickson.
Here.
Ken May.
Here.
Joel Newman.
Not present.
Sean Burtzle.
Here.
Craig Conley.
Here.
And video is recording.
Video is on and recording, it was set up to auto-record. We will verify. That as well, yeah. It's recording. So, the consent agenda here, just approving our agenda for tonight, any questions there?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
I second.
All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Any abstentions? We do have a citizens forum here we put on, I think there was an item, do you want to talk about, but did anyone want to speak that's here, present?
I bet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I'm just wanted to inform the city council of we're hosting a business summit on Saturday, June fourteenth at Studio two oh five. Or if it goes well, we'll do another and another. This one is gonna be on business, financial management, and social media, so small businesses, nonprofits, if you know anybody who needs information about that, pass them our way. And I have postcards for you that I can drop off after we're done.
What time?
Between eight thirty and noon.
Are you circulating amongst our business community?
Um, I would love connections into the business community, I know certain people that I've reached out to, but I don't know everybody in town, so.
If you don't mind leaving, you said you have notes.
Yeah, I've got postcards, I'd love to pass them out.
But if you don't mind leaving a few extras.
Yeah.
Get some of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. I put some up at the post office and at Larry's and at the coffee shop, so if there's other places that I should post it and love connections or other people in the area.
Certainly. Well, thank you for presenting that, we appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. I assume you're using social media.
Yes, yes, of course. That's up to my sister-in-law, I'm talking finance, she can talk social media.
I know, but I'm assuming your advertising.
Tell me the date just one more time, June?
June fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
It's the same day as the junk day.
Get rid of your drunk, or junk, get rid of your junk, get rid of your junk, you're drunk, and get some financial education. Outstanding.
Can we put a drunk in the dumpster?
Um, who else? Uh, there, this is an opportunity, Sue, there was something we're gonna bring up, we talked about, and I said we could touch on that in the citizens forum.
Is this a good time to do that? About arrangements for Thursday, Friday?
Let's do that, right now, because we don't have a further agenda item. So the public knows. We have been pursuing our city manager, we've had postings, we've completed the first round of interviews. We will have our four finalist candidates on-site on June fifth from five PM to six PM here at City Hall for a public meet and greet. Your feedback is appreciated, there'll be some forms for that feedback. We're looking to get that from you all. We have four solid candidates joining us that we're excited about on the fifth, and then City Council will be conducting final interviews on the day of the sixth, and we will convene a closed session meeting the night of the sixth to consider and determine who we're going to proceed with. And make that offer, and then we'll hope that that offer is accepted, and so that'll happen on the sixth. But the public portion of interaction and meet and greet is June fifth from five PM to six PM at City Hall. We'll get some social media stuff out on there.
Right here?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, okay.
For the meet and greet.
Oh, okay.
So that is that portion of it, and then Sue wanted to talk through just the scheduling of it, I think for everybody's purposes here.
And there's just logistics that we need to decide on, and if there's ways we can jump in and help out. From four to five. The candidates are having a driving tour of Slater. So, I think maybe you were talking about checking into a big van, or else we need three vehicles.
Yeah. I checked with the, I taught the school originally, and it's a little bigger deal. They may be able to do it. We have to get it okay through the superintendent and school board or something like that, so I can still work on that, I wasn't sure where we were gonna go with that, if we were still gonna do a separate tour versus whatever, driving around, driving around.
Mm-hmm. I think we'll still go where possible, because I've asked Mark to kind of be there to point out some of the things that is beyond all of our, maybe day-to-day, but I don't think it'll be as intensive in that hour timeframe as what, what maybe some of the other things that you'll show, maybe they're more historic and.
Yeah, and so if we want to get a list together of where you want the whole group to go, and where else you think I should go. So you want me to to work with transportation, with Ballard Transportation, and still see if we can do that?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that, Ken, or in light of all the other things we're at, and then should we just use personal vehicles and drive around?
Well, the other thing is, is like, Mark can only be in one place, and so if he's gonna talk about some of those things, it'd be good if, I, I'm one person's opinion, if we're all in one place.
If we can get it done, and we can borrow a little bus, it's not like it's a crazy amount of people. There'll be six candidates plus this group that decides to tour.
Or, sorry, two spouses, I think they said.
Oh, okay.
Three spouses now.
But then we got. Okay, seven.
Well, we got, so we got seven, plus, I think, seven of us, six. Four, five, six, seven, thirteen or so. And then Marquita, or?
I thought it was trolley, over in Cambridge, that little trolley company or whatever, where they had like the Christmas light trolleys and stuff like that. They were there in the parade last year.
I've seen it over here.
Yeah, but I mean, they're right on the main road out of Kelly, they're sitting alongside the road, I don't know.
In Cambridge?
Yeah. I don't know who they are, but it's just a thought of, I mean, if we're running, I don't know if you're gonna get, get a poll through the school board, but.
Where at in Cambridge?
The main drag coming out of Cambridge.
To the south?
Yeah, the south, there's usually, there's like two of them sitting alongside their buildings on mine, they've got trolleys, it looks like street trolleys.
Yeah, I can get you the name on that, because they were looking at it for the Middle of Nowhere Festival, for their transportation from Main Street out there.
I don't know what you're gonna get through the school board and approve this and all that stuff, but.
We can, yeah, I mean, and the superintendent might be able to do it. Himself or something like this, but, but, um, it was just kind of like, well, it sounds like a bigger deal than.
Unless, yeah.
Well, because I, I was thinking it was just gonna be for that period of time when I was gonna.
Order the tire and the.
Bullpen kind of thing, but.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure we were gonna be both of these.
So let's circle back on that.
So this is a bigger group than, so we're talking about probably twelve to fifteen.
Yeah, twenty on the high end, right, I think, is seven plus seven, fourteen.
Yeah, so add in a few extras. Fifteen to twenty. Um, yeah, okay. I can, I can look into that.
If it falls through, then we can fall back.
Yeah.
Personal vehicles.
Personal vehicle.
So, yeah, it's just that then we only have, we'd have to have.
If you can find something, it'd be great, but I've been more signed up for.
Oh, we need a big school bus, so. I can look at, I'll, I'll check, I'll check in, I'll check with Cambridge, and then wherever this company is, and, and if you have it, Taylor, that's great. And then I can check with Ballard as well, if it sounds cost prohibitive or problematic, or.
Awesome.
They're busy.
Well, if you just handle that, that'll be great.
How's that?
And then we'll have meet and greet back here. From five to six, then after that, well, we're having dinner over at Public House, right, Taylor?
Yes.
And that's like.
Council and candidates will have.
That's lined up, and are you taking care of?
We're taking care of the food, yes.
The food arranged? Probably from B Fab, we're hoping.
Yes.
And then we need name tags, has anyone seen tags around here, should we find some?
We need to run with that.
Okay, we need.
Somebody needs to run with that.
Need name tags.
I don't remember seeing any in the back, and that's where they would be.
Okay.
I would just go and stay, probably here.
We can get.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, I mean, if.
Zoo, I can get the name tags if you're, if you want to get a list together, I can get them all printed.
Oh, well, people can write their own names, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Keep it simple, right?
All right.
We can do that, yep.
So I'll get the stickers.
I got a text from resident saying that anybody affiliated with Iowa State, they have vans and Suburbans for cheap, but I don't know if, I think we're above a van and suburban level if we're getting fifteen to twenty.
They have fifteen passenger vans.
Um, you know, let's say.
Regular mortals can.
Craig Conley. No, he said, let's reach out to, okay, let's reach out to.
You're not no longer early every day, so.
Ken, go regular with this.
She can probably order those for us.
They're gonna be fine.
But she could order through Amazon for us.
Amazon's my friend.
Through, who has the account, obviously. I know you're retired.
So then we're through Thursday evening, dinner's over there, council and mayor, Mark, Jen Gogarty, four candidates, three spouses. It should be about fifteen people.
Yeah, I was gonna plan for twenty on meal.
You got food and drink, both.
Yeah, Public House will run that for us.
Good.
Um, so then on Friday at eight fifteen, we start with interviews. We'll need everybody to be here. What's everybody's thought? Do we need to have coffee here? Craig was thinking he would work on some coolers or cold beverages, but do people need coffee that early in the morning? I'm not a coffee person, but.
What I was wondering is, can we just tell the, the interview group that if they're a coffee person, stop by and drop our name, and we'll just run an account with Mel?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, I think there's coffee across the street.
Excellent.
It's a good break to get up and walk across the street.
Well, I, as Craig and I were talking about it today, he kept saying, let's just keep it simple, we have a lot to do right now.
And I don't want to be coffee, so. But I will, so Sue, is that mine, a cooler with drinks in it?
If you don't mind, that would be great. And then.
Maybe just water.
Do we need some pastries of some kind? Should we see if Mel has?
Or vendor, I don't remember.
Because a vendor we could use, is that?
Yeah, she's been using.
She's not bashing right now.
Yeah, so to go through Mel and something like that, I can ask her about that.
I think she's wanting to get some from Costco right now.
There's also a company in Uxley.
Stella's Suites.
They're local, I heard she was looking at trying to find a place to move over here, that the brewery over there may be selling, and so they may be looking for more different space.
I was looking at the biggest thing, like we can walk across the street, but Taylor, if you're gonna take care of pastries.
I'll ask, I'll ask Mel about it.
Awesome.
No problem, she's probably on here.
And then Ken, you're planning on touring around?
In between.
For those who are, for the one that Canada's not interviewing, then we'll have lunch here. Craig and I looked around today, so that's gonna be like fifteen to twenty people. Are we just thinking we'll get like some lunches, box lunches, or something from B Fab for lunch on Friday? That, so that'll be councilman, mayor, and what, uh, Mark, Jen Gogarty, and anybody else that we pull in for interviews?
We have, we haven't anything to reach out to anybody yet for that.
That's coming next, someone else.
I haven't, I haven't read that email to determine if we ever have it.
The hell you been doing?
I've not gotten that far.
So when I was planning on the cooler for morning drinks would be enough for lunch also, it's all.
Yeah, and we have that fridge back there, so you could just throw that in that fridge if you want it, if you don't want a haul of cooler.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cleaned out.
So that's Taylor's seen to lunch, Craig's got drinks.
Taylor, you said yes, you'll have a lunch.
We got.
Yeah.
Okay, do the whole thing with B Fab.
I'll ask him, yeah, about it, but we can just get folks done that way.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to follow through with it.
And then, or I might have it printed out back there. The only other item I have, we go into closed session after that lunch, and just mayor and council.
Yes.
Who would be on each of the two panels, and our goal was to have about five or six.
Panels.
So two different interviewing groups.
Yes.
Did you want to talk about the win beyond notes?
Left and right. I don't know, it doesn't really matter.
Well, we need to invite a few more people.
Yes, and I think we had determined, I think we had determined those people. And those people were, and I believe the minutes are in there, that on the desk, I can verify if they're in the minutes, but the department heads. And then those department heads, and then committee. Or boards, committee or board leaders, like Park and Rec Board, planning and zoning, variance, I think.
Higher EMS.
And I think that, we think we kind of got to our number that way, we talked about community club, a few community club people.
Maybe Kelly and Erica.
Yeah, that's what we'd say.
We talked about them.
Yep.
We kind of did mental math today, and I was wondering if the interview committees were getting pretty big, was our only concern.
Well, I think you'd have two. I think the goal was, and she said that it would be about, it wouldn't be crazy to be six, or seven people, and that I think she said.
She thought five or six was.
So I think, I think we'll plan to kind of be in that area, so that means, that means that there's capacity in each room for three additional people roughly. Right, so that's six community representation.
Goes with council.
So who's gonna take care of those invitations?
I think it's a phone call, isn't it? I mean, this is, when I was talking about printing.
Oh, no, no, just who's gonna make those contacts, this is a nail in everybody's dent, because I'm leaving town tomorrow, so I'm just gonna make sure.
I see, I was just starting, yeah. I seem to be right in the center of your focus, Sue, I'm feeling.
Yeah, well, we can bird dog, we can bird dog this pretty easy, let's, uh, let's write the list of the names down, and we can go through the email and get an email to all of them in one batch, some hopefully. Who we talked? Chad Grant. Chad Brainerd. No, it's not all these people are gonna be available, maybe be available either, so Chad Grant.
Yeah, and Mark.
Yep, yep. But then you have, I think we talked about Jonathan Thompson.
Yep.
Or Amy Carlson, or John Kayler.
Yep. Yeah, but it's from the chair, or? I don't, I know, I know his longest.
Billionaire.
And I don't know if we, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be some people that are busy and gone, and, and stuff too, so.
But it's Friday during the day, so we can get together.
Mm-hmm.
Can't do it.
Just right now, four council, Mark and Jen, Mark and Marquita. And Chad and Brad are up to five on each interview committee, because I'm not counting the two that are planning to drive them around, right, so you'll kind of be a third interview group.
Are you available Friday?
I can, something.
I think, I think we'll, I think we'll be surprised when we throw these invites out about how many people are available to attend the interviews.
I'm just saying, that we're already.
And there would be a community feedback form.
Friday, so you got.
There is a community feedback form, so that the night of, we give the community, they'll be, we'll be gathering that feedback and requesting it as well.
Thursday night, five to six.
Yeah, so we'll get some community feedback on that. What else, guys? So do we have, is somebody making a form for that, is Marquita doing that? She has it, yep. She has it, and I'll get it to you before then.
Well, I guess.
That's all I have on my list.
What I've seen, crap work.
I'm good, long as somebody's on it, I'm good.
I think we're good, I think we got it.
So Taylor, you'll lead that one, make sure we get the invites out to.
So, yes, I can, I can, I can.
Why is my list getting this long, and everybody else is just like.
I was double checking, it sounded like you, it sounded like you were doing it, that's why I would double check that.
I can touch base with people, but it'll be, it'll be this week, Friday, not tomorrow.
I think the goal for me would be to get this all busted out and communicated by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Hence the time period that we'll cover on Friday, we'll, Ken will be here Friday myself. I can be these, getting hold people too. Okay, perfect, so we'll work through, that'd be great.
And a couple of related things, I will get all the, the cube, I was gonna do that today, didn't get all the.
I talked to him today.
Oh, you already did.
I talked to him today, I didn't set up reservations, the candidates are being instructed to do that on their own.
I wanted to make sure.
But I did verify the pricing. Oh, I didn't ask that question, but I'm positive we don't.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to have three rooms for two nights.
Totally. I get it, a hundred percent.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about folks, and I'll cross that off.
Yes, so.
And this one's a tippy-tappy, but we're interviewing them, but they're also interviewing us. You want me to check with Russ and see what it'd take to clean the carpet and the chairs?
I don't think this is bad, and I don't think you can do anything with the back room.
Well, the back, break room's kind of rough.
Yeah, but it won't, it is what it is, that's been cleaned, that's.
Sounds permanent, and that's it.
Yeah, I don't think, I think, let's hold on that. I see what you're saying, and I agree.
All right, some boys believe this both ways, we're interviewing them, but they're making sure they want to come working for us.
I always understood, like, isn't it like congressmen, when you get in, you can spend like ninety-five thousand dollars to remodel your office, or we're not offering that?
I don't think we'll be emulating Congress in any way, should.
Okay, so don't worry about.
Okay.
Clean inflation.
Okay, maybe a dust job if we have free time.
Well, I don't need to hire Russ for that.
No, yes, certainly.
I'll see if I can drag Kyra up here or something.
Yeah.
Whoa.
Well, I'll be with her, but.
Some support. Let's be honest, he said bring Kyra so that Kyra can point out and show him how to do it.
That's probably.
So he does it thorough and correct.
All right, so don't worry about that.
Okay, so I think we kind of covered a lot of that, we'll get some communication out before the end of the week on that, so everybody feels good about where we're at on that. Again, I just want to reiterate, because we do have a lot of people in attendance online. There's a public meet and greet for the four finalists for the Slater City Manager job on Friday, or on Thursday, June fifth at five PM at City Hall, and the community is welcome, we are seeking your feedback on the four finalists. Now we'll move into the business items, unless there's any other comments.
Taylor, you got a better.
There's another comment.
You have a social media skillset I don't have at all.
Debatable.
Is there any way to put this, this video on the website, so people can actually see that we're trying to open that up? I don't know how we communicate.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Because if you told me to post it online, I would say.
We will get, we will uncover and hone our website skills in the next forty-eight hours and figure out some of that.
Cool, it just might be an easy way for people to understand what happened.
We're certainly doing the best we can, we'll definitely be on social media and posted where we can, but.
I'm just useless, I.
We'll get to the bottom of it. So business items, so obviously, we've attracted thirty-six, thirty-seven people here to manage for a reason. And we apologize for the quick turnaround on this type of meeting. It's always been important to me since elected to try to provide the greatest level of transparency that we could, whether that was postings beyond just on the door, but on social media, recordings, remote access, all those things, so we definitely want there to be ample time and access for everybody to participate and know what's going on here. But what we, what we have here, I am presenting here, so I wanted to scroll down here. Yesterday at about five thirty PM, Ken received this resignation letter from our city clerk, Jennifer Davies, and I think, I, I obviously, we want to let you know that she's decided to step down from her position effective immediately. And I just want to say, Jennifer served the city of Slater for over fifteen years, and we're very appreciative of what she's given to the city over those fifteen years and the time she committed here. I think tenure of employees has been extremely valuable, and I think we need to take a second and just recognize and appreciate fifteen years of service to our community. A lot was accomplished in those fifteen years, and we're thankful for her time that she gave us over those fifteen years, and we wish her nothing but the best going forward. So thank you to Jennifer for, for those great years, fifteen plus years, I believe it was, closer to seventeen, so we're thankful for that. But we did receive this resignation as effective immediately. So this brings us here to convene tonight as the, as a sole purpose or main purpose. Any discussion, or are we in position to accept and move to our?
Do you need a council motion to accept that resignation?
Yeah, I think we, we would want to accept this, a motion to accept, a second, and then a vote. I move, we accept gender estimation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or comments associated with that, anybody?
One question, and I don't think this is something considered, is there any difference between resignation and us accepting a resignation, since we didn't go through a normal exit interview, turning over keys, all the other normal things that would happen? Is there any legal ramifications to consider before we say we accept?
I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one, but, but it seems to me that we can't legally move forward with any of our normal processes until we agree that we don't have us, the administrator, so I don't see that we have a lot of choice, I mean, we're not gonna.
And I'm not sure that's the reason.
Sure, yeah, well, and I think, I think the reality is, this is provided to us, and we while we're disappointed, first off, of the departure unexpectedly, but also then the lack of notice, maybe, we understand that life happens, and it's at will, our employment is at will both ways, right, so this was her choice, and I think we have nothing but to accept it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know the, I don't know the direct answer to that, and that's, as we've talked about, identifying and finding a city-appointed attorney, I think this is the moment that I was fearful of as we talked about that, but.
This is some of the.
I don't think this hurts us.
Expertise and.
I'm not losing sleep over accepting it, and the ramifications long-term.
I just want to make sure we thought about that and said, yes, let's do it, no matter what.
Yep, so, so we had a first from Sean there, and then we had a second from Ken, so we will go ahead and vote on this here. All those in favor signify with a sign, aye. Opposed, same sign, and any abstentions? All right, so now, the meat of the issue, the transition plan, resolution for contracted, contracted help that we have here. Sorry, I'm gonna skip over that one really quick, that's just some banking tech information. Protocol things we need to do from a banking perspective, but here is the template of a resolution, I'm gonna be honest, we don't have it formatted in matching format and spacing and font as we have done historically, but this should suffice to accomplish what the objective is. I think always working and considering a contingency plan is an important thing, because unexpected things happen in our lives, and so we, we had done a little bit of work, or I personally have done a little bit of work to prepare for the unexpected. And so what I'm kind of asking the council to, to look at and consider is, there is a temporary interim clerk option that has been presented to us, we have done due diligence through consultant experts that have been working with us, we've also had a call, Craig and Sue both had a call this morning with the Iowa League of Cities. And they also referred a specific individual to us that we're going to have a conversation with, to try and secure for immediate support. I have talked with the individual, the individual has worked multiple scenarios similar to this, where they come into a situation where a city is short-staffed or has an unexpected departure, and comes in and digs through and finds their way and navigates their way through, you know, operations, and determining how to keep operating and moving forward, as well as reviewing past records and making sure things are in order, and that we are doing things above board the right way. Two important factors that we obviously want to make sure that we do is, we want to make sure that we're able to issue and receive utility bills or water bills, water and sewer bills, and maybe even arguably as or more important, we want to make sure that our staff is paid as they're supposed to be paid on the timeline that they're supposed to be paid. We then also have accounts payable and bills coming in constantly, we did, we do have a stack in there of checks and bills and different things that are dating back till five twenty is the latest action, so we do have some stuff piling up that needs to get taken care of that was already there, so the objective would be to get somebody in with those capabilities. This candidate has worked specifically in Simple City, which is the software that we use today to run the city. So that is a plus side for us, we're not having a training or a technology gap. Uh, so that is a plus side for us. We're not having a training or a technology gap, um. So, uh, that is a positive. Uh, the, the resolution here is, uh, giving me that a power to go ahead and engage in that contract. Um, uh, discussion, but it is setting very clear parameters around what can be included in that contract. So we're looking at capping the compensation at fifty dollars per hour. This is a contractor, so the city does not incur benefit costs or retirement costs, those type of factors, so.
While you're, while you're on that, that'd be something I would, I'd like to see included in here that there, that it's paid on a ten ninety nine basis not to include.
Okay.
Um, you know. Payroll deductions and. Certainly and or, uh. Yeah, and I, so that just so that's.
Clear. But basically that first, that first bullet, the compensation. As long as we add with no additional benefits, so.
I, yeah, I would just say that I would, I would specifically put in there that it's paid on a ten ninety nine basis and. And then does not include benefits, Ipers, you know, like Ipers or insurance and, and, uh, and we don't take out, we don't retain. Taxes. Just so that's.
Yeah, agreed. I was just trying to figure out what language that we want Taylor to add to the resolution.
I don't think that's a. And I don't think that's a burdensome thing.
Would you guys be okay with the wording sounding like this? Compensation at a rate of fifty dollars per hour? Paid as ten ninety nine contractor.
Yep.
How many hours per week?
I don't, my preference would be not to. Uh, Taylor, in your role as mayor, you'll be managing her, and I think that's something we should allow it, yeah.
I would.
What's necessary?
At a minimum, I would like to have the mayor of pre, pre approve overtime. I, I don't think we should have un.
Okay.
Unlimited overtime available.
It's, yeah, it's also not gonna be at a rate of anything over the fifteen hour though either. It's not time to have, it's contract.
Yes, that's. That's, I think, the thing. Because they're not employee, we're not, we don't have to pay that time and a half, is your understanding? Yeah, that's, that's mine as well with the contract. I, what I think would be fair is to request a, um, to request. Uh, notice if hours are to exceed forty hours in a week, and then also to, uh, receive. A log of time and expenses. Which I assume will be outlined. We'll look at that and make sure that it gets outlined in the contract that we look at, cause we'll receive a contract from her, I assume.
That's right.
And what I will, what we'll have to do then is review that. So we'll get that reviewed and make sure it fits everything. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, with one exception. Do we, is there going to be a we, are you gonna, before we can, yeah, we wanna move forward to this next week? Do we need another special session, or is this something that you can do on our behalf?
I think you're giving me the authority to do this on my behalf.
Okay, good, that's what I was suggesting.
Authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal.
Good, that's what I was hoping is, when you said we, I don't wanna have to have another special session before you can do anything.
I, I guess, I wonder if we, again, we can run this past at least Mark Peter, but versus the word proposal, maybe a contract? Or do we need to review, you're gonna do the proposal and then we'll still have to meet for the contract on the ninth, cause is that? We can work under this.
I think we want the word contract in there, Ken. I think that's fair.
Hold on. Sounds like an art, you know, you know.
Yeah, let's change the word to contract. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract.
And, and I, I agree with you. I assume that she'll have a contract because she does this.
And I'll, well, I'll make sure we get it reviewed. And I'll make sure the others are, have eyes on the contract so you all can look at it as well. We obviously just won't convene or share feedback.
Yeah.
Among each other in the census.
Ten ninety nine basis without benefits or?
I just put as paid as a ten ninety nine contractor.
Cause if things go well, she can start as early as next week, right?
She can be here Monday.
So I don't wanna slow the process down.
She can be here Monday and Tuesday, and what she advises typically her process would be to stay, work three days in office, she would stay two days. Overnight and then travel on the third day, leaving. Earlier afternoon. The things I think I would just want to reiterate, obviously, for the public here is. This will cause us to reduce and limit our open office hours to the public. We will communicate that and get that communicated. This will cause us to have a lag in some responsiveness. We are keeping track of all communication that any of us are having associated with the phones or emails. We have access to all of that information. We've taken the necessary steps to make sure accounts and information and everything secured and adjusted in names. Um, and we'll keep track of everything we're dealing with and, and who we're talking to. We'll be working really hard to get back through and get answers to everybody. Um. And, and prioritize and work as efficiently as we can, but we may not have as much face availability in office in person. If there are items or things that. Perhaps have been in the works or outstanding for department leaders or. Uh, Chad or, or others in the community, a building permit or something of that nature. Uh, I would not hesitate to reach back out to the email, um, just to double confirm that the request has been sent or that information has been sent. We have a lot of eyes on the email, so we'll be working through those. We don't want anything to get lost in the cracks. So if there's something you've been waiting on that you haven't heard back on, or you're, you're looking for an update on, please send an email to our email here. Which is cityofslater@hux.com.net. It is our standard city email. Send that to that. We are reviewing that daily here, a group of us on and off, and keeping track of and trying to respond to those requests.
Did you get into all calendars? Or rentals?
We have not found that yet. And I didn't, I didn't have time to look at that. We have not found that, but we will, we will get that. We will get that.
May. Just for so reported, say that, um, you had authorized. Our I T guy to do some updating. That, that, that totals under the, um, the amount. Has to be voted on here, but I think so that's under a thousand dollars, is that?
Yes, I have authorized the purchase of a updated router with V P N access. For the city of Slater, our current router and technology systems does not have V P N access. I authorized, uh, our I T specialist to make that purchase and to get that installed immediately. And I did authorize him to use the expedited shipping, shipping for eighty dollars to get it here and get it installed.
Thing that that included was, would be remote access both for our I T person and for our, um.
Exactly.
We don't currently have, so.
Exactly.
And, and again, I just want that.
Yes, yes, we did. Thank you, Ken. We did, we did authorize that and get that done and in motion. And I have talked with, uh, the I T A again a couple times today. Um.
What's the term of your contract that you're gonna negotiate with? Can you have a term?
Length of time? Yeah, so that's a great, that's a great question, Chad. I appreciate that question. We are hoping to have an offer extended to a candidate a week from Friday. If that were to be the case, depending on the candidate that's selected, the start date could vary. The start date of the city manager, um, could be as early as, you know, a week or two weeks after that if we get a candidate. But it will defer back to what their employment contracts may say and require from them for a notice that has to be given. So we will be a little bit contented on that. The objective or the timeline we set out with from the beginning was by July tenth to have somebody operating. Here for us as the city manager and getting started. Um, obviously, there will be a lot of question about this. One of the thing is, things is, um. It's unfortunate to lose staff for us, um, but another. Challenger thing that we face is we've gotta get now a city manager in here and get adapted to what's going on, and we've gotta also find a clerk to step in and fill that role as well. So we'll be hoping, hopefully identifying this candidate on the, a week from Friday. Working with them immediately upon their acceptance to discuss and talk about clerk position and. Determine what the best route is to pursue a new clerk and, and go from there.
Did I just say no fun of this? The council wanted a, um, a max limit on, on what you can negotiate, it's like.
There will be a clause that I will review and ensure, which is our termination, contract termination clause in that agreement. We will make sure to look at that, determine that, and negotiate that with a reasonable separation or termination notice date. I would guess that these type of contracts have something like a couple weeks or a week or thirty days. We'll determine that and pin that out. But I admittedly believe that we will probably be looking at using this interim clerk as a conservative estimate from my perspective. For six to eight weeks. Perhaps a hair longer.
Better than what you're. A bit shorter.
We perhaps a bit shorter, but.
We believe that two of the candidates. Would be able to start pretty quickly, that they, we believe two of them are not under contract, and we believe neither two are under contract and one of them.
Yeah.
Is believed to have a forty five day notice. So I'm, that would also look really good for them to, hey, I can build my own department and that's, that could be a bonus for some of them, but. I just think, like, again, if they wanted a, a term that, hey, so Taylor can't come out here and negotiate a six month contract for.
I will certainly not lock the city into a five year contract. I will be very, I will be very cautious about that, because I think we want, uh, a new manager to have autonomy to get involved. Immediately, but I also wanna make sure we have the interim protection. You know, for our, for our accounts payable and receivable and staff.
This isn't somebody from Indeed. This is somebody that does this all the time, so they're. They're interested in this being a smooth, their whole business is making this as smooth, as smooth as possible transition for us. And so that they will have an idea of when they'll be available for the next transition and need.
Yes. The other thing I just wanted to do, um, the other thing I just wanted to say is I was. As I was prepping for this meeting today, I just, or this af, this afternoon. I think I received close to thirty five different messages from community members. Offering support or what they can do to help out, and I appreciate that. I think that's one of the best parts about Slater and where we live, is people recognize that there's. A, a bit of a change here going on, and so I appreciate those that have reached out. The other thing that was really cool, I think, to see that I wanna share with, uh, everybody is. I've received at least ten phone calls from. Administrators, clerks. County leaders, community leaders that reached out and asked what they can do to help us. Volunteered if they were clerks or administrators to send staff to provide support to us in the transition period. I was somewhat overwhelmed by the number of people that reached out to just say. Just pick up the phone and call us, whatever you guys need down there, we're here to help you. Surrounding towns, uh, so I think it's cool. I think people will look to us and wanna help us out, and I think that's a good thing, and that's because we have good, we have good people here. We're a good community, and so I think that's a positive thing for everybody in the community. That people are paying attention to us and they wanna help us.
Mark, you wanna offer a chunk of trail, do you know?
Yeah. But we appreciate that.
Yeah, that's an excellent thing. You're harried as heck right now, but make sure you keep a list of those names, because you probably be owe them a thank you sometime.
At some point.
It might slip through the cracks, cause. We're all distracted right now.
It's been, it's been really positive, so I appreciate that and. Appreciate everybody here's support. For those that don't know, Sue and Craig have been coming in to help Jennifer as we were down a staff member. Um, and so that's been a, a great thing for us, because we had some knowledge of what was going on and some education and training on where we're at. So that's been great. I thank both of you. Um, Ken obviously got thrown into the middle of this as he received the resignation, uh, jumped right into action. Connected with me. I appreciate that, Ken. Um, and we appreciate everybody, everybody being involved.
I didn't think I could wait till July night.
I cannot wait till June ninth. I cannot wait till June ninth, but appreciate everybody, Mark. Appreciate your knowledge, share that's going on, and everybody stepping in and picking up and. And the community for their patience. We will get through this and we will get some solutions in place. Um, again. We'll have somebody, uh, full time here, hopefully on Monday, if we can get this contract turned around and it makes sense and everything meets the parameters. Uh, Friday, we will have, uh, Ken and I will be here in the office Friday morning, along with one of our pool managers to take care of, uh. Take care of pool passes. If folks have pool passes, I did notice that there's some emails and some, some notes about people needing pool passes. We'll be here Friday, eight to noon. I know it's the last day of school, I believe as well, so swing by to get your pool passes. Um, and Ken and I will be here, and we'll do the best we can to answer your questions, or at least. Gather them and find the answers to those questions.
Actually, I'm gonna have to.
A little bit?
After, yeah, at the end of school.
Okay.
But perfect, and something I'll have to take off.
From clerk to bus driver.
Did my random drug test today.
Are the results back?
You wanna copy?
That'd be good.
Alright, before we move off topic, then, uh, do you need a? Motion to accept this resolution? It's not really a numbered resolution.
The only reason there's no number on it is because I believe I've found the number.
Okay.
But the organization of things, obviously coming into a system, I wasn't familiar with the organization on, I believe it's, uh, number forty nine. I think it's number forty nine, because I think the one on the desk that I need to sign in there is from forty eight, but. We will confirm it and write that in that gap up top.
Alright, then I tend, I, uh. Move that we tend to accept. Tend to be numbered forty nine resolution.
Any other discussion on that? We just received a text question, maybe? Alright. All those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign. Any abstentions? Perfect, we will get to work on that. And now we have made it through what our posted agenda is. Again, June fifth, five P M. to six P M. City Hall. The meet and greet with the four city manager finalist candidates. Please join us if you're around. Take that, uh, last.
Motion, just a couple of updates. Uh, we did have a chance to talk to the bank, so I think you already mentioned that, so we're in a good place. Bank wise.
Yep.
Taylor got ahold of the I T guy, so. We think we're getting that all to date, but just a heads up, passwords are changing, so if anybody has a password. They probably don't work anymore, Taylor has those. Um. There's a gap in our. Don't worry about that one, you're gonna.
We have I T, we have I T going through all that stuff to make sure passwords are up to date, all accounts, identifying all the accounts. Making sure we do the password adjustments, that standard protocol, anytime you have staff turnover, obviously, is to. Adjust all passwords and access and everything along those lines.
Um. I talked, I remember who I talked with today, but wondered if we should maybe not do any water shut offs. In case the area errors on our side for maybe a couple of months. I don't know if that takes any action or not, but it would be a shame if somebody.
I think it'd be case by case basis, and I think Mark will be familiar with a likely suspects.
Cause I know we're, we're gonna have some issues in there, and I would hate to shut somebody's water off who actually.
Yeah.
Sends a check or sends cash and we just.
Yeah, we.
Might have to knock on a door too.
We, I would just say that we, um, I know there's gonna be a lot of, there's a lot of those type of things. We are not even twenty, we're barely twenty four hours to this notice. I think by the time we have somebody here that gets eight hours in the system and then sixteen hours in the system, I think clarity will be a lot more by Tuesday. This time. And I think at that point, if we've identified like items like that where we're not gonna meet this, we're not gonna do that, then if we need to at that point, we'll convene another meeting. To sit down and talk through the major concerns, but I think. Some of those decisions right now, I think, uh, it's best. In my experience to try to gather as much of that intel as we can in these moments. And be calculated about what we do versus taking action and then retracting action, et cetera, but it's a, it's a good concern. We will not be shutting anybody's water off between now and.
I guess. Water bills go out.
We are counting on getting water bills out next week. They may be a couple days late. And I think with our resolution we've already passed, we've extended the time period for payments to be paid. We need to make sure that the logistics were executed on that. If for some reason you notice late fees on next month's water bill, we will. Work on those and take care of those. The intent is to not punish for our delayed send.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not current with the, the shut offs, I just wanna make.
Well, I think.
Done one day, and if I screwed up somebody's water bill, I would hate to shut their water up, cause I screwed it up.
And I think that's something that Sue said, uh, Sue has said after spending some time in here, and I think the public, it's a really good chance for the public to be aware. Our water billing process is a, is a little, is a hair maybe behind some of the modern times in the sense that. These are manually printed on perforated cards that have to be manually bent and torn out and sent individually. So when we talk about water billing, um, the reason I can't, I'm not committing to, we will have it done on time is. We have not. We have not updated the process to a point where we can just print and send or a third-party prints and sends. These have been manually printed on perforated paper and folded and ripped out and manually dropped off at the post office. That is a process hopefully we can improve or update in the future as we evaluate those efficiencies we're looking for. But it is not a one-person an hour job, it is multiple hours to perforate and pull water bills off of.
And the, the backside is even worse.
Yeah.
Receiving and getting those logged correctly into the system that.
Yes, manually entering every single payment, it's actually higher risk. So, so we are.
So for those people who've reached out and wanna help, sign up for, sign up for uh, ACH or payments on your water bills.
ACH water bill.
That would be the biggest thing you could do to all help us at this point in time.
Yes.
Although, I don't know, we might get that transferred with.
Yeah, they can do it on, yeah. But we're working through those things.
You've talked about reaching out for some help to get. To, to former clerk or assistant clerks, is that, are you, are you leaning towards that or leaning at waiting till this interim?
Say that one more time.
Are you leaning towards having some, a former, a previous assistant clerk help do those?
Water billing?
Yep, this week.
Certainly, I think we'll begin that discussion hopefully tonight with the potential uh, interim clerk that we've identified. And has been highly recommended by multiple sources, we'll, we'll look at that. And then what we'll do is see if we need to supplement in between based on accessibility and availability. And then what we may definitely do is make a connection or introduction if we can to streamline. Information share between those, and if we can bring those people in, great, but I've already checked with one past, past that was, uh, doesn't have the capacity. Um, there's one other one that's come to our attention that reached back out asking if they could help, we, it may be worth a phone call to that person.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you were.
I will, I will vet that option.
Okay, and that's, I'm fine with.
I will vet that option and.
You making those.
Everyone will be made aware if we have, I want people to be aware of who's gonna be in and out of this office.
Yep. You could vote on that? Or guy, I don't get a motion.
We did vote, right? Yep. We voted.
Okay.
I uh, I just, I just wanna say, this is not a standard practice, but because of the situation, we did have some comments on here. I just wanna be clear, this will not, one of our regular meetings of things, we're not gonna do a lot of engagement with chat. We're coming off mute for virtual, virtual attendees, we'd ask you to be in person if you have comments, but there is some comments here, and I don't want anybody to feel like they're being ignored. So I do just wanna read them quick, cause there's five of them. There was a question from iPhone, one question, last meeting Craig said that our water bill rates were at five. Were to five to six to other towns, but he never said what our sewer rate was compared to those towns. We still have that discussion about how we're going to adjust those rates. That topic will come up again, at this moment, with what we're in the middle of. We are going to have to hold on the discussion of how we adjust water rates and what we do associated with. The payment of outstanding bonds and the strategy around the approach to water bills and sewer bills and any sort of rate changes. We will have to pin that to, at least not June ninth, but it, it, it'll have to be a discussion probably. Beyond that is where I sit right now on that topic, is I don't intend to uh, throw that into the mix of. As it's not a mega priority, it's something that we need to take care of, but it's not altering the direction or future.
Yeah.
At the moment.
We have, we have those recommendations in hand.
We have some of them. Um, and I talked to Heidi today about that, our consultant, and she was on board with, let's. Let's let a city manager get in here and look at that reporting and get their arms around it, and then have a discussion and make a vote and a decision on that, because there might be a different perspective. So, so just so everybody knows that, we'll get to the bottom, I can't tell you, off the top of my head, I would be wrong, but. Our sewer rates across that same comparison were higher than that, closer to the number ten ranking.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
And our average came in at more of a window of like eight to nine across the county in terms of cost. The one thing I would just say there, and we're not gonna go deeper into this, but. We are one of the few towns in the county who's already updated our sewer facility in comparison to others who will face adjustments in the future. Uh, Cindy Drummond asked, can the city accounts be assessed remotely? I think we, with uh, what about user's name and passwords authentication goes, I think we covered that Cindy. Um, hopefully that works, uh, C Lee, who's the temp clerk that's being hired on contract? At the moment, uh, she doesn't want her name public, as soon as the contract's executed and that, we will make sure to make that public to everybody. But I can assure you, we've done our research, this person is recommended by the, the major association for cities in the state of Iowa. So we know this person is qualified, they wouldn't recommend somebody that was not qualified, and we've also had this person recommended by. Uh, Marquita, who's been working actively as a consultant for us on many topics. We also had it referred to us by another city administrator inside of the county, says it's the person. Um, S Burkastrand uh, asked, will there be an audit done? We are not focused on that right now, we're focused on getting our arms around day-to-day operations and functionality. The best part about the modern world is there's paper trails and data trails on everything. Um, those will be dealt with when we get there, but at the point, we don't have any uh, intent or focus on just immediately getting some sort of audit done. But we'll get somebody in here and get working on processes and picking things up. And then C Lee asked the question last.
It's hard to say, if we, if we find anything that.
Yes.
Makes us feel uncomfortable, then obviously, yes, there will.
We, yeah.
Is that fair?
Totally.
Yeah.
Yep. It's just not, uh, we're not aware of anything, we're not concerned about anything at the moment. And there's no reason to believe that there's a concern about those things, and so it's just not a focus point, it's not productive at the moment.
And we're audited annually.
We do an audit annually.
Automatically, so that's gonna happen. And that's, and that typically is, is, well, most years that's been in.
It's annual, we've always had an annual audit at the end of the year, and we do need to start looking at.
The end of our year is July first, so.
Correct, but sorry, end of year is typically when our audit is completed. Yep, and Craig and I said it on the last.
We might be able to identify.
We need to identify a new.
If we decide to.
Auditor here.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, somebody, Kevin, you're off mute, just so you know. Um, I can't quickly mute, yeah. Uh, okay, and then the last question I had on here was just, why not have the previous clerk to Jennifer assist, makes more sense than an outsider that's not familiar with the city? Yeah, that certainly makes sense, we have, we have uh, reached out and some of those people have reached out to us. We are considering those options and reaching out. We, that is a great point and one we thought of immediately, so we are pursuing and considering that. Um, but it hasn't been as fruitful or as cons- or as dependable or consistent as what we're going to need over the next couple of weeks. We've had some volunteers say, I could come in this week and help here, or I could help here. So we wanna make sure we also get some continuity over the next couple of weeks. Instead of just uh, help today, help tomorrow, help here, help there type of strategy. So this is for continuity and consistency for all of us. Here, those are the questions, again, just repeat. This isn't gonna be a normal practice where we engage with the chat and respond, but given the sensitivity of the issue, given the participation. And the urgency of this, we want everybody to feel assured that we know, we have our arms around this. We have a transition plan, we're activating it, we will, we will be fine, and we will have um, everything in order. Very soon, and we will, you'll be able to come in and take care of things as, uh, as early as Friday morning. And then hopefully starting regularly, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and working from there. If you had anything, like I said, that was outstanding, anything you felt like you haven't been given a response on, a check you've given us, you haven't seen cash. Please send an email to cityofslater@huxcom.net, and we will work to review that and respond. With that said, uh, motion to adjourn, adjourn would be uh. Welcomed for anybody that is needing that, needing the.
Good jerk.
Desire to adjourn. Sue and Craig, but I also heard Ken and Sean try to do it as well. All right, thank you everybody for being here, um, all those in favor to adjourn signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And any abstentions, okay, thanks everybody for being here.